If you guys want to pass it?
We're gonna pass it the way it is.
They've had it more than enough time and they haven't--
David said that they had some changes that they were wanting, but he never heard nothing from the--
Jake hasn't brought them down and he talked to Glenn today and he talked to Frankie and that's it.
So--
As far as I'm concerned, we're passing it. Unless, you know, most of the rest of the board don't agree with that, but I think we should.
So, well, yeah, it's your call, whatever you want to do.
Okay.
Okay.
We're officially open for the work session now?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Well, we just talked about the ordinance. I do want to say something about the Attorney General's letter, okay? I agree that now that it's been explained to me why they considered we had two meetings instead of one, okay, because we went from open session, we closed, open, we adjourned from open session and went into a closed session. When we went into a closed session, that was a second meeting. And there was no agenda for that because we closed out the agenda when they closed the meeting.
Go ahead.
Adjourned. So therefore, the next time we go into a closed session, what we should do is go into a closed session, close, not adjourn from the open session, but go into a closed session and then come out of a closed session and then we'll be back in open session and adjourn the meeting. That way, we're working off of one agenda.
Can we do that?
Yes.
There's a problem--
Well, here's my opinion on this. If we, like, go into a closed session, everybody has to leave and today, it's real cold out there.
Yeah, so we need to close the meeting so everybody knows that it's closed and that they leave.
Well, then we have to post the--
Well, then that's what we're gonna have to do.
Well, if we have the option of either posting, you know, adjourning open regular and then going into closed, you know, but then two pieces of paper, one for the open session agenda, one for the closed session agenda.
Exactly.
So that way, you know--
Well, that's what we're gonna have to do.
Yeah, but same thing is because they, if they think you can open a meeting back up and they're standing out there all that time and then you close the meeting and they can, there's no reason for them to stand out there and--
Right, because what we're doing is when we come back in is adjourn the meeting.
Right.
Right.
But we're still working off the same agenda. You understand what I'm saying?
Right.
If we notify them that we're gonna go into a closed session and then when we come back out of a closed session, we're gonna adjourn open, you know, come back into an open session from a closed session, just adjourn, then they would know that that's all we're gonna do is come back out and adjourn. But if we adjourn the open session, okay, and done, and then go into a closed session, that's a separate meeting. Then we have to post two pieces of paper. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right.
Either way will work. If they, you know, if they want to stand out there even though they know we're just gonna come back in and adjourn, you know, into open session and adjourn, then, you know, that's on them. That's what they want to do.
Can I offer a suggestion? I know work session, I'm not supposed to speak, and I brought this up when Carl was mayor. Why not have a meeting in the conference room or the firehouse? When you go into a closed session, those people attending go out and debate.
Because--
I brought that up.
We probably do it. The records, the records keeper has to keep the records in the thing. And we can't transfer the records from here up to the firehouse.
Well, there's many cities that do just that.
Huh?
There's many cities that do just that. Me in a firehouse--
There's a lot of questions coming up at our meeting. We have to go over there and get information.
Right.
We did.
Okay, can I make--
And they have to remain secure, so--
Do whatever.
Can I make a suggestion? We were talking about posting two, letting everyone in class. We don't, we're not supposed to know what you're doing in a closed session except why you might be going in a closed session. Okay, so that paper would just be saying, right, in a closed session, the reason why we're gonna have a separate closed session meeting. That to me, having been in a secretary position, I think would be easier for you guys. Because then you're closing your open session, we leave because we know there's nothing more but a separate closed session. And then that makes it a little bit easier for you guys because you're doing it properly, but at the same time, we're aware that you're not gonna do anything but a closed session at that point.
And one thing about that too, I've got a bunch of paperwork from an attorney in Kansas City that deals with sunshine law and she's, was actually part of the writing of the sunshine law. And one, and she writes about different cases that she gets. And one of them was a city that did just what you're talking about doing while in a closed session. He says, "Oh, we forgot to do this," and they opened the meeting back up again. That's something you cannot do.
We never did.
Yeah, I'm saying, I'm saying, just be aware of, if you do it that way, you know, adjourn the open session, go into a closed session.
We don't adjourn--
Yeah, you can do that.
We don't adjourn the open session, we just go into a closed session and then close the closed session and come back into an open session on the same agenda that we gave you, please?
Okay, I thought you were talking about doing two separate--
And then adjourn.
I thought you were talking about doing two separate agendas.
No. If we go in to do, do like they want and close the open session, adjourn from the open session and then have a closed meeting, well, then that closed meeting has to be a separate agenda.
Right.
Okay. That's all I'm saying, okay?
Right.
The other thing was, okay, was that, and I'm worried Clyde isn't bothered by it, but I was, okay? It got into the paper about the Attorney General's, the response that the city said. Not that there was anything wrong with what the city said or that it was a bad article. The point was is that we were supposed to discuss it at work session tonight and the board was supposed to, you know, go over that before it got put out for public knowledge. And I didn't think that was right, okay? It wasn't that we weren't gonna make it public, okay? But it was, the fact is, is that it should not have gotten into the paper before we actually had a chance to discuss it. And I didn't think that was right. I was upset about it. Now, nobody else may be upset about it, but I was. I thought the board should at least go over that and, you know, say, "Okay, well, big deal." And then, then it got into the paper after that and nothing was new.
So I guess from now on, when we have a situation like that, when you're given the paper this, don't give them anything else, just give them this.
Okay.
And then after the meeting, then you can give them the rest of it that you normally give them.
Right. See, we had a deadline on when to respond, so I had set a deadline--
Well, no, I totally understand that.
--which was to place that public records that anybody can request from that point. So, I mean, I was kind of obligated, you know, I can't--
Oh, I see.
--know we can't have it, you know?
Right.
I had to comply with the set of two hours.
Remember, it was not really approved, okay? Technically, it wasn't approved.
What do you mean it wasn't approved?
It wasn't technically approved, those answers were not technically approved.
Right, but the deadline is actually today, so it's like--
Right. No, I totally understand what it did, okay? I'm just saying that it would be like, okay, here it is, but this is a draft, this isn't real, okay? It ain't, it ain't real, okay? You understand what I'm saying?
Right.
But it wasn't a draft, it was the real thing because he had, we had to respond. They had to have, they had to--
Then we should have had a special meeting to do the response. When something like that happens, it comes up--
We couldn't have a special meeting because our, one of our auditors was on vacation. Because we would have discussed this at that meeting. Do you understand what I'm saying?
What I'm saying is, yeah, I understand that one of our auditors was on, okay?
Yes.
But that was, that was, that was after the reply was already made.
Yes, but if we would have had that meeting, we would have discussed it at that meeting. See what I'm saying? Two weeks ago. Yes.
It's a new point because nobody disagrees with anybody except me. I was unhappy with it, okay? And I want to make that point, no, I was unhappy that it got into the paper before the board had a chance to look at those responses.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there anything else that I'm talking about?
Basically, that was about it. The ordinance and the complete, I'm gonna sit down. Because the rest I'm gonna do on my report.
I'm gonna ask for permission to take these two classes. The classes are free, they're in K. I've taken the four online classes that I have to do as pre-referenced. I did that at home on my computer. But there would be expense for mileage.
What are the classes for?
Incident command systems, in case there's an event of emergency, how to run like a, you know, command post and, you know, what it's expected, what their forms are, you know, like intermediate and advanced.
Is this a one-day class or--
Well, one of us three days and the other one's two days. And see, 99% of classes for emergency management you can take online at home. You know, but these classes are actually classroom. You can't, you know, you have to actually show up, go to your seats, what they call it. And they don't come around very often. So, I mean, it's up to you guys because it's gonna be tricky because one night's a board meeting, so I'm gonna have to rush straight here, another night's payroll, so I'm gonna have to have somebody take the transfer checks, you know? And the mileage, five days to a front K, it's 270 bucks, you know? So it's your call, I mean, if you don't want to, you know--
Is it beneficial? I mean--
Yeah, it's something that the city needs. We need a command center and stuff.
It's required for--
Go ahead.
For like fire departments, it's required, you know, for them to be like those safety or trailer or whatever and stuff like that. So, I mean, it is pretty standard required.
Now, has any of our firefighters taken any of these classes?
Well, Curtis is signed up for these two classes. I looked at who the other participants were. I don't know if he's actually gonna show up or not because Tuesday, he was supposed to be in a class with me in the gym and he didn't go, so, you know, if Curtis is going, it'd be great because we could carpool, you know, split the cost of, you know, the mileage. But, you know, I don't know if he's gonna actually go or if he just signed up for a seat or if he didn't go or not.
I have no idea. It's something that's gonna be a big deal.
Okay.
That's fine, cool, right?
I agree.
It's necessary.
You all are good.
All right. Hey, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Hey.
Okay, anything else?
I'm doing good.
Okay, I guess I'm good. Boy, I'm 14.
Ah, here we go.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no problem, no problem.
Yeah, no, I'm going.
I'm doing good, doing good. Bruce Saylor. I'll meet you there, but still, it's Wednesday.
They traded me for I.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We party.
All sorts.
All right.
Really? All right, I'll wait.
We're gonna take--
The Constitution of America, the United States of America. To the Republic, which is changed, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, and evergreen, and everlasting.
All right.
All votes, all replies, all who voted here, all who voted later.
Okay, I would like to nominate Pam Myers for, for MDC.
I, I didn't press the roll call on this one. I need a first and a second.
I have the first.
Second. All right, roll call, nominating Pam Myers as the alderman of Ward Two. That is, all right, Alderman Costu, Alderman Dennis Gobain, Alderman Gloria Vayner. All right, Pam, come on up. Go ahead and take your seat. You are now a official. All right. Okay. Raise your hand. Repeat after me. I, Pamela Myers, do solemnly swear--
Pamela Myers, you solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States--
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Missouri--
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of the state--
Provisions of all laws of the state.
Affecting cities of this class--
Affecting cities of this class.
And the ordinance of the city--
And the ordinance of the city.
That I possess the qualifications required--
I possess the qualifications I desire.
For such office as specified in the laws--
For such office, specified in the laws.
Of the state of Missouri--
Of the state of Missouri.
And that I will deem myself--
And I will deem myself--
Faithfully in said office.
Faithfully in said office.
Congratulations. Yeah, all right, let me get your John Handtack there. There. And there. And there. All right, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah.
Okay, I need--
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I wanna, we had a long time resident pass away this last week, Jules Brown. And I'd like to have just a quick moment of silence and then continue on with the meeting.
Everybody will stand up.
Don't we have to approve it?
I'm probably better than the--
They're approving it.
All right, I need a motion to amend--
I'm ready.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Everybody, everybody will stand up and--
Yeah, stand up, move in the silence.
Better than his bomber.
Yep.
Thank you.
After the agenda, we now will go into the public forum.
Well, let's do an approval of the agenda. We did a motion for the, maybe now let's do a motion--
Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Jeff Stroger, our auditor, is here to talk to us. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Jeff Stroger. I'm here with one auditor, Sasha Williams. Wanted to explain kind of what you've got here in your audit report. I know most of you have heard this before, but I do happen to know that you have a new auditor that you hadn't heard to talk about the audit before, so. We wanted to get a chance to kind of tell you what's in the report. I'll go through it fairly quickly because it was fairly routine audit this year. The first thing we do is that we issue a report on your financial statements. And the report on page one explains that. It explains that the responsibility for the financial statements is with the city. And my responsibility as the auditor is to give an opinion on whether or not they're fairly stated in accordance with the basis of accounting that you, you had to. It explains the different standards that I followed while I was conducting the audit. And then it explains that it is our opinion that these financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with modified cash basis of accounting. That's the technical language that's in there. What that is, is an unmodified opinion. Used to be called unqualified, it's a clean opinion. That's the one that everybody wants to get. It explains that we've done some additional work, there's some additional information in here that's over and above the basic financial statements. We've applied some procedures to those schedules as well and that we also believe that they're fairly stated as well. We also explain that we also issued a report in accordance to government auditing standards to say that we've looked at the city's internal controls over how we record transactions and we've looked at compliance with different laws and regulations, contracts, grant agreements, things like that that would be financial nature. That report follows the first report and it explains again what standards we hear while we conducted the audit. And it explains that while we're not actually giving an opinion on the city's internal controls, we do have to understand how they work in order to be able to conduct the audit. So while we're getting an understanding of how, how the transactions are recorded, the processes we go through, that if we see any weaknesses in the controls, that we'll point them out and this is where we need to do that. We note in here that the different kinds of findings that we would have would either be a significant deficiency, that's the stuff that's, eh, these are some things that you need to look at. And then there are material weaknesses. Those are kind of the bigger weaknesses that we would point out. We mentioned in here that we, we've got one material weakness that we do point out and that we didn't note any significant deficiencies. So I'll come back to the material weakness in a minute because we'll get back to that part of the report. The last part of this report, like I was talking about, is, has to do with compliance and we did not report any instances of non-compliance. The financial statements themselves follow, I hate to spend a lot of time going through your numbers. I know you guys are familiar with your, your financial statements. And one of the main reasons why I want to do that is that last audit, we came in, we suggested several changes to the financial statements and we recommended material changes. This year, we did, you know, things were in order, the accounting worked so much better. We didn't have any significant adjustments to recommend. So that means that the financial statements that you're reviewing were already posted before, before we even came in for the audit. So that's the reason I wanted to mention that. And that's also why we normally spend a lot of time with the numbers unless anybody had any specific questions. The footnotes to the financial statements are just more detailed, they follow the actual statements in that section 15. It's just all more specific detail about what's in the financial statements and some of the procedures that you follow to prepare these. So that too, it's very entertaining reading. If you're suffering from insomnia, something, you pull that out and I'll take care of it. The part of the report that everybody is usually the most interested in was, like I mentioned earlier, the, the actual findings themselves, the recommendations that we have. And the last page, page 35, is the recommendation we wanted to make.
Now--
As I noted before, it's considered a material weakness in the controls. And I would say probably 80% of the clients that we audit are gonna have this same recommendation. We're pointing out that we don't have enough of a segregation of duties. And what I mean by that is that if one person is responsible for handling money, receipts that come in, actually reporting the transactions in the financial statements and then able to be a part of the reconciliation process, then you've got one person that is handling all the different facets of the transaction that way. And that's not an ideal situation. Now, I understand that we have one person who works here to do that. So this is one of those things where I don't really know how you would go about changing it with the number of staff that you've got. However, if I don't point it out to you, then I haven't done my job. So that's why I just want you to be aware that the situation is considered to be a weakness. But I'm also not having any findings of any--
Wrongdoing, yeah.
--or anything like that, so. I always like to make sure that those things go hand in hand, you know? We've mentioned the weakness, we're not mentioning any problems with the accounting processes. So I know that the involvement of Michael Horle's office and Matt's work, I've worked with Matt on several clients and we've worked together for many years and I know the work that they do is, is very reliable. And I know that helps. Having that extra set of eyes is, is, is gonna eliminate some of the risk. You know, unfortunately, with one person, you're never gonna be able to overcome that. But, but I think that what you're doing seems to be taking the steps that you can to, to make the best of the situation. Anyway, that's kind of a nutshell version of your audit report. We definitely appreciate the opportunity to do the audit for y'all and I hope everything has gone as smoothly from your end as it has on ours. You know, if, if anybody has any questions about the report, I'd be glad to try to answer it.
I'd love to go over that, that was great. Good job.
Appreciate that. I know the work that Dave's done and all the folks that we worked with while we were here, everybody was very easy work with and make the job go about as smooth as we could hope for. So we appreciate the effort that everybody gives us in professional living. You know, working with Matt really seems to make things go very smoothly from our end. I offer that not necessarily because I want you to be happy that I had an easy time with the audit. The reason I offer that is that if, if the audit goes smoothly, that means we've got accountability. And that's the point that we're looking for anyways, to be able to be accountable for how we spent the money. So that's why I offer that.
So, in your opinion, and this is your opinion, it was a good, good audit.
It was a clean opinion, so that's, that's the one everybody wants.
Yep. That's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. Aren't we all?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Do we need to approve the audit then? I know we approved the draft, but if we approve, do we need to approve the audit? I would think--
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Yeah, I need a motion to--
I'm gonna approve the audit.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed?
All right.
Okay. Matt, you're up.
I don't really have anything to say. Other than I just wanted to come down and get some face time with you all. I know I met most of you before, the aldermen. I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Matt Flair. Work for my Michael Horle Association, it's up in St. Genevieve, acting as treasurer of the city. Come down and help David once a month to do bank records and put together treasurer reports and budget reports. And like I said, I didn't want to have anything to say, but if anybody's got any questions, I'd be more happy to address them.
Pleasure.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Okay, citizens. Jody and Anna Odom.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys.
Thanks.
Be careful going home.
Thank you, sir.
First of all, I just wanted to say what happened last week with the incident. Mr. Francis Mann called it poor. I'd like to add a couple disgusting, disdaceful, unprofessional, childish, and illegal, okay? That should, you know, Dennis, you reported the statute for citizenship. We've gone up a couple. 79, 250. The mayor made, with the consent of the majority of all members elected to the Board of Aldermen, remove from office for cause shown any elected officer of the city, such officer first being given the opportunity together with his witnesses to be heard before the Board of Aldermen, sitting as a Board of Impeachment. There's no impeachment, not being a resident is not an impeachable offense. All that was, was a dog and pony show. Dennis, you wanted to act like a bait shop. That action was fully illegal, okay? Diana told the city clerk she had a resignation letter before the meeting. You ever knew about that before the meeting? You didn't get a chance to do that, to tend to her letter until later after the office took place, okay? audit took place, okay? She tendered her resignation. The board has not voted to accept that resignation, therefore she's still an alderman. Okay? And now you've put a fifth alderman on the board. So you now have five aldermen on this board. Her resignation has not been voted on to accept, okay? So right now you have five aldermen.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay? And I just, you know, you, this board sits there in dozens of ways they want to, they don't have any respect for the laws at all. So I'm trying to go, Sep, Chapter Seventy-Nine, things do, you guys do what you want. And it is, I mean, disgusting, okay? Another thing I want to bring up is, um, and this is brought up in the town hall meeting, it was brought up during the candidate forums, citizens are not given the opportunity to speak when you want passes awarded, okay? Your, your ordinance on meeting procedure says you will abide by Rosenberg's rule of order in that if voting on, on an action, one of the things is open the floor to the public for comments. You're not doing that. We don't have the opportunity to say anything about it until the ordinance is already passed, okay? That's denying us our First Amendment rights. That's got to change, okay? You, you want to come up with an ordinance that affects the citizens? We have to be given the opportunity to speak yay or nay, you know, either for or against that ordinance before it's voted on. You're not giving us the opportunity to do that. That needs to change, okay? We don't have, I talk, I don't know how many people that talk about things, I said, go to the city meeting. Number one thing I get, I don't want you to arrest it, because of a couple instances here where Mark has pulled, pulled me out, uh, Carl White tried to get me thrown out and I explained to Mark that there'd be lawsuits and he agreed, and then Frank Smith being arrested, okay? People are afraid to come in here and speak for fear of being arrested. That is something that this board should alleviate. You should not have a fear of being arrested to come in here. And right now, that's, that's what, and the Ponder's coming up, I wasn't, I wasn't here, I was going to sleep today the last month, but I looked at the video. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Ponder stood up and the first thing, the mayor screamed at them, "Do that, give your name and address." Yes, Tom, yeah.
I did not scream at them.
Yes. You want to see the video, go on YouTube, Tom.
I didn't scream.
Hold it, that's enough.
No, no, that's censoring them. You won't censor me.
You can say whatever you want, I just don't want no argument. There's gonna be no argument.
You're not gonna stand here all night free?
No, no, okay, my three minutes is up.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all he had to say. And by the way, I know, I know Kate Ward sent each of you, but just, just for the...
No, I got two of them.
Each of it, and you might actually try reading that, uh...
Motion.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor of the Board, tonight I want to express how much I appreciate you all doing and attempting to do a difficult job. I know it's not easy sitting on a board, okay? I'm on a board too, so I know what it's like. My issue is that I'm disappointed in the lack of professionalism and decor displayed by this board. A great example last month is the manner in how personal grievances were exercised to either remove all the women's men and manner which is done. Second example was when the Ponder's came with questions and it seemed they were treated with disrespect. We are all in this together, okay? This is my personal opinion, okay? I want you to understand that. I feel with the way the board is operating right now, we can't go forward. We all need to be working together and I want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. So I think all of you have, there are, there are resources out here that I think maybe the city is not using. I just want you to know, not all of us are angry citizens. Some of us want to make it better. But at the same time, I'm disappointed and I want my community to improve and go forward. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, under old business, we have the ordinance for the fire department. We need a...
I make a motion to read, uh, ordinance number nine eleven, by title one.
Second. All in favor?
Roll call.
Okay.
Alderman Clyde Costu, Alderman Despo Bay, Alderman Gloria Vayner, Alderman Pamela Myers. Alright, bill number nine eleven and ordinance establishing regulations for the fire department and stating when this ordinance shall take effect.
Okay, I need a...
I'll make a motion for second.
Second reading.
Bill number nine eleven.
Second.
Alright. Let's do a roll call for that. Alderman Clyde Costu, Alderman Despo Bay, Alderman Gloria Vayner, Alderman Pamela Myers. Okay, bill number nine eleven, ordinance establishing regulations for the fire department and stating when this ordinance shall take effect.
Mayor, have a motion, pass it.
I'll make a motion, that's bill number nine eleven.
Aye, second.
Roll call vote, Alderman Clyde Costu, Alderman Despo Bay, Alderman Gloria Vayner, Alderman Pamela Myers. Vote is passed.
Okay, under new business, the, we got a letter from the attorney general and in your packet you will find the response that we sent down. We'll just... There it is, okay. We just stuck it in there so you guys know what, what our response was because it had to be given by today. So. Okay, is there any questions about that?
Nope.
Okay. Departmental reports, emergency management, David?
Yeah, um, on Tuesday, the seventeenth, I took a class called Web E O C at the St. Gen Vesey Health Department, um, awesome class. Um, it allowed me to get a password and a user ID so I can now log into that system where you can request supplies in event of an emergency, you can log all your... It's got like road conditions, um, it's set up really well where everything you need is listed right in your fingertips, so, um, and it's the way that all your forms are there so you can get, you know, reimburse for your expenses and, um, I'm glad that the city now has access so that we can request assistance when we do have an emergency. Um, I'd like to get the board's permission to take Incident Command Systems three hundred and four hundred in Cape, the tuition free, no expense with few models.
Okay, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you bet you're approved. Okay, water and sewer report?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, chlorine residuals are good, backteasers, we replaced the chem feed pump, uh, had to order a backup pump, or it's in. Uh, clarifier's been fixed and running good and we reseated the plant, okay? Uh, bought a new used honey wagon vacuum pump that on the old one was completely wore out, of the old one, and the new used tank is bigger than the old one and the pump is a lot better, so. It, uh, the bids are in the, uh, in the, in the tolerance package and it, it shows that we, we did the best possible route that we could do.
For the honey wagon?
For the honey wagon, yeah. Rather than replacing the old, old pump, okay? Because the bids were way too, way out of whack as far as I'm concerned, but, anyway. Okay, bids are in for circle drive, uh, waiting on one more before we open the bids and, uh, make a decision on it. Uh, Rooster is the only one that has to give us the, uh, bid yet and he said he can only do the driveway and not the street and these other two are gonna do the street too, which I think is a much better deal, but that's new to hear. We'll discuss that when we open up the bids.
Okay.
It's, uh, that's it for water and sewer.
Okay, how about park and cemetery?
Okay, the park was vandalized again, the old jungle gym was tore up and the gate remains locked, okay? Don't know who did it, don't know what, what happened.
What happened to the, I mean, what happened to it?
Um, Frankie, I can tell you.
Somebody burnt it down, like somebody pulled it down and broke it.
Yeah.
Sliding on the ground.
Yeah.
For real?
Yeah.
It was old anyway, I mean, the concrete was showing and stuff.
It was probably a good deal that it was torn up, but, I mean, I just...
It's never a good deal to...
No, it's not a good deal, the vandalism is not a good deal, but I mean, for safety reasons, I'm glad it's on the ground, okay? I really am.
So is that something that we need to get out of there? I mean...
Yeah, when the time permits, we will. We will get it out there and we'll put those brown ones up with the, that we have down there.
Oh, okay.
So, but, uh, just wanted to make everybody aware to keep an eye on the park once in a while because, uh, uh, we don't need any more of the kind of vandalism, worse things that happen, okay? The cemetery is okay for now, that's it.
Okay, street department flag?
I don't have a lot, you guys have been really busy, I think you've done a good job. I know we just put in a lot hours, late hours, and I appreciate it. That's, that's all I've got, we just want to tell a thanks.
Fire department?
Frankie, good. We have five firefighters going, that's taking first responder course, they started , uh, three, two days ago. Anyway, they're taking that, that's ten week course. Uh, we gained three new firefighters, which adds a plus on our park. Uh, callouts, we had one brush fire on Harvey sixty-one, one brush fire on Church Road, one structure fire on Third Street, one structure fire on Z Road, and one mutual call for Ozora. Um, we replaced the air tank on fifty-one and plus, uh, replaced one of the breaker chambers, it's all fixed now. Uh, the other truck that we're working on now is forty-one, we got a bad pump packing in it and the tank valve out leaking, so we're in the process of fixing that because it's starting, it's leaking our water out, so. Also, uh, me and Dennis was discussing the other day here, which of course couldn't be here discussing, but we was discussing about, uh, reflectors for our hydrants. A lot of our new guys are, uh, where they don't know where the hydrants are, even on the map, they ain't paying attention where the dots are. So I was gonna look into that if we could get together and actually get some, uh, reflector form or some sort of reflection off of them. Uh, I talked to Jeremy Triller out in Perrigo, the fire chief of Perrigo, they got a neat setup, they go on top of, of the hydrant wing, which actually spends weight, you get bolts down and you can spin the hydrant in. Uh, we didn't really discuss the pricing, but, um, they'd actually probably work very, I mean, but we could probably just fix some normal reflectors up aside or something like that, and, uh, driveway reflectors. Uh, the other thing is, we plan on sending the new firefighters, getting some firefighters been on the department to basic fire, fire training. Uh, we get, whenever we get a focal date, it's coming up, the University of Missouri's setting, putting it on, probably at St. Gen here, so we're gonna try to build a that, a few others. And that's basically all I have.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment, man, if I could. The house fire on Third Street, the fire department did an outstanding job in saving that structure. I want to have known that they did, they did a real good job on it and I was real proud of them. Proud to say that we do have a fire department along here.
Okay, police department?
I really, Mark, are you here?
Yes.
You got anything to say?
No, I do not.
I really don't have nothing to say right at this time.
Okay, do you have anything to say on animal control?
I'll be careful what I say, I haven't been here two weeks, but I haven't seen no animals. Too cold.
Yeah. Okay, citizens participation, does anybody have anything to say? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I would like to second, I'm ahead.
Everyone? Take this one. Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, all in favor?
Aye.